Four hour thing, or we're gonna have to go to four different things?
Yeah, I don't know how we're gonna have in-person meetings, but I guess we could.
Okay.
Hey Troy.
Hey, how are you?
Pretty good.
Good.
How long is this gonna be Bob?
Uh, anywhere from one minute to three hours.
I'm up for the one minute.
It shouldn't be that long. It should, it just should be a few minutes Troy. We just need to review your, your proposal and then get some feedback from the, from the design review commission.
You got it.
That ought to be it. That ought to be it.
No problem. I know my brother is on here, plus our builder, I think, the contractor.
Oh, okay. I didn't see him on there yet.
Okay, I hear the church, so it's, it's seven o'clock. We're not gonna wait for George. We have a forum. Take a minute to look at the minutes from the last meeting.
Sorry.
There's George. Hello.
Hey George.
Hi.
Hey George.
Hey. There you go. There's the last meeting. You can see Troy, that the last meeting lasted five minutes, so.
No problem. I'm prepared to do whatever it takes. I just was trying to manage others' expectations of me.
If you've had time to look at the minutes and there are no additions or corrected corrections, the minute stand is approved. Go on to the design of the old Pemida building. Who's gonna take the lead on that?
Well, I guess I will for the time being, and then we can start asking questions and talking about it.
Alright.
This is the, the front of the building as proposed with the skirt and the two bays. And if you look at the top view, you can see that the bays are offset. So they're further back than the front. So the front is not a total straight across thing like it appears on the diagram. Right now, currently, that's what the side of Pemida building looks like. You can see that I think what Mr. Probst is presenting is probably better than what we have right now. I don't know if the three-foot skirt is enough with the size of that side or not, but we can talk about some additions we might want to consider. Also here, here's the rest of the building, and I'll show you some of the surrounding area. That's the back of the strip center that's across the street. That's the hood of my car. Let's see. That's some of the other area right there. So you can kind of see what the area looks like. Sorry. And get an idea of, you know, what this might look like compared to the rest of the area. It looks to me like it kind of fits into the area. But maybe you guys have some other feedback regarding it.
Do we wanna open this up to questions, or do we wanna have any more description before we do?
I don't know what other, sorry.
Would you?
Somebody wanna say something?
Did, did you ask if I wanted to say something?
No, I, I.
My default gown, design.
All I heard was design.
Okay, George, what about, you know, Bob mentioned whether the, the three feet is enough. What is the height of the building Troy? Can you tell me that?
Looks like one end of it's twenty feet tall. Somebody's having a lot of feedback issues in there.
Yeah, I think that's accurate Bob. I'm not a, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the, on the height of the building.
Says twenty feet.
Yeah, sorry. I'm doing this from my cellphone at the moment, so it's a little small for me. You know, but in addition to this, I mean, look, we're getting ready to take down the old rusted Pemida sign. We're gonna blacktop the, you know, blacktop the old asphalt parking lot that's there. We're gonna continue to make sure that the appropriate landscaping's done there. So I think it's gonna be a beautiful building. I mean, we're not overdoing it. It's not a retail center, but at the same time, it is going to be, I think, at worst case scenario, as aesthetically pleasing as it is now, and quite frankly, it'll be a lot better, as we put the whole building together.
I think my focus would be on landscaping and screening, because you do have that residential area behind you. Since you're adding on to a building that has, is quite in keeping with the neighborhood and improvement to that and asphalt, that all seems like a net gain. I am concerned about screening or landscaping. Can you tell me a little bit about what you might?
You know, I, I think that, I think there's actually none there now. I mean, it's nothing but grass and asphalt. And I think we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna try to improve that place. Now where's the neighborhood that you're speaking of?
Right behind them.
So like, the picture we're staring at now would be to the right?
I guess, I'm not as concerned, I'm not concerned with screening on Jernigan. I'm, I'm thinking of marginal a little bit, because that's where you come up against the residential neighborhood.
So if you look at this picture here Troy, the, it's to the left, it's to the west of the building. There's a residential area there. Really only has two dwellings in there right now. So at some point, we are, have been talking to somebody about developing that property, so I think that's what she's talking about. But I don't know, I didn't take a picture of what's behind there, so I don't really.
Well, there, of course, there's natural screening there now. There's a.
Well, Ronnie, I'm not talking about the screen right between the back of their property. I don't know if it's back is correct, but on the, on the.
The west side.
I'm talking about the north side.
This side.
You're talking about between the building and Jernig and marginal.
Yeah, because the other one has, as you say, it has vegetation. It's not a problem. But it would be kind of nice if there was a little attention to the marginal side.
So you're talking about this side of the building right here?
Yep. This is Travis Probst, Troy's brother. Sorry, my, I was the one I think caused him to disturb, if I had to call in via non-video conferences or feedback. So what we're planning is, is if you look at the addition, and then to the other, the older part of the building, it will actually all get repainted to match. And then around the building, we will be installing, cleaning out some of the, I guess, rough patch areas. We were there installing some new bushes and trees along it. And then coming back in and refilling the parking lot. So it will look like a brand-new facility after it's done. And then come around where there's any open areas and plant bushes or plants along that as well too.
I thought in the architectural review, for commercial built projects, that we were supposed to get a site plan.
I don't think we're there yet, are we?
We haven't gotten there yet because we have, the DRC has to, you know, approve the, the plan, the, the visual aspect of the building.
But I think that the site plan with tree plantings would be part of that visual judge, the judgment of the visual.
So we, we asked the porch, the side porch to do that because of the proximity to the, to the boundary of the property line, how close it was. And she was gonna put a ten-foot or a nine-foot porch on there. Found out she only had six feet, eight inches to do it in, or whatever. So that was part of the, that was part of the reason why we did that with her, just because it was so tight there. We needed to make sure that whatever they were proposing was going to be on the property. This one's absolutely gonna be on the property. There's no doubt about it.
But Bob, we did, we did require a site plan for the church addition. The Catholic church, no, not the Catholic church.
Then they go.
The Fayette Baptist?
No, not the Fayette Baptist. What's, oh, you're talking about the, the swimming pool, not swimming pool, but the, yeah, the addition behind that church out there, which I can't think of the name of it right now, sorry.
Correct.
The splash pad and all that?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, is.
Hang on a second. I'm gonna look and see whether we do require a site plan for the design review commission or not.
Well, we do require a site plan, but at this point, you're.
That was Victory Life.
Yeah, Victory Life, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, Bob, I'm looking through the zoning code right now. Under the design review chapter, there's not a list of required documents. It does give all the criteria for the DRC to consider, but not, there's not a submittal list or checklist saying anything about site plans or anything. Now, there's a separate chapter about site plans that come under the planning commission, of course.
And it says on the design review as well.
It says it under design review someplace?
Go to site plan, and I think in the first paragraph, it says that it would be viewed by the design review and/or planning commission as it impacts either. On the, part five, or after this, the next one.
Well, it actually refers to the site plan in the design review thing without actually requiring it.
Yeah.
It says, "Design review shall review all aspects of the site plan in addition to consideration of whatever after that."
And I knew that was the case, because we put in all that stuff about percent of.
Landscaping.
Ability and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Design review commission shall be the adjudicating authority for all aspects of site plans and uses that pertain to the design review guidelines.
So at some point, we have to have a site plan before we can approve, but, but we can give direction and say where we stand and what we're looking for.
Right. Yes.
Can we, can we say how much landscaping we require?
Well, we didn't hold them twenty-five percent before.
That's what I thought.
And, you know, that's something we need to tackle at some other point. A percentage is not as important to me as the, the effect of what we're trying to accomplish.
Absolutely.
And to me, because we do have a residential area there, you already have the natural greenery in the back and, and the asphalt. All that's gonna be fine. That's gonna be an improvement. I just want to make sure that someone who's going down, someone who lives on marginal, or someone that goes down marginal, doesn't see that it's something that they're disappointed in, as a citizen and voter.
Yeah. And it, and I think it's important to add that it's, it's not about your building. You, you tout the, the, the finished product as it'll be a beautiful building, but it will be a beautiful building in the context of possibly a, an industrial project. But people who live on marginal and want to go to sixty-four, Highway sixty-four via marginal, they have to go down that street. I think it'd be better if they were looking at a bank of trees and sort of separating that building, saying it's not that we don't like the building, but it doesn't, it doesn't need to seem adjacent to our residential surroundings.
Yeah.
So I, I would be in favor of some, and they don't have to be big, just as long as they finally grow someday, some, maybe some cedars along that road.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I'm seeing, that, the only concern I have is the screening or the landscaping. And it doesn't have to be a lot, but it does have to accomplish what we want to accomplish. And I don't know enough about the height of the building, the scale, to say that brick base is not enough. It's enough for me, but if someone has a problem with that, I, I don't have a need for you to spend more money on, on any of that aspect. I just want to make sure the screening is adequate.
Okay. So we need to get a site plan. We can kind of preliminarily, preliminarily approve the design of the exterior of the building. But we need to see a site plan that, what we can review the shrubbery and everything else that's gonna be in, involved in this project, right?
Right.
So can we have a, you know, it's up to you, Chairman, but do we need like a motion to approve the preliminary design of this building and then awaiting a site plan?
If, if we approve this, what's the next step? Is there another step?
So they would have to come back with a site plan. We can approve it based on, with, and, and, I think, anyway, preliminary approval of the design, so they don't have to work on the design, but we need a site plan to approve the whole entire project.
Didn't speed up the process.
Site plan or a landscaping plan?
Well, I'm more focused on the landscaping plan. You're supposed to have a site plan. We would be looking over that, but I just, I'm concerned with addressing the landscaping, the screening. I, I had no objections to anything else that was presented, to the degree that we were shown something.
And I'll add that, you know, I don't think, you, you have to have a site plan per law to pull a permit. So you might as well add.
Wait.
What now? No, no, I'm gonna say you might as well add whatever landscaping notations on the site plan itself, instead of worrying about, you know, more than one.
Right, create one document rather than two.
Right, right. That's my view.
Well, I'd be more of the opinion that there's no reason to try to, to approve something contingent on a site plan that we haven't seen and don't know what's gonna be contained. I think the meeting could result this evening in saying, we have a very positive opinion of what we've seen so far, and we'd like to see the screening and landscaping addressed, and at which point we would probably be very comfortable with the site plan once we see it. I don't know why we would want to approve it contingent on something.
I agree.
And I'm fine with a called meeting if, if there's a time crunch or anything.
Is there a time crunch on this Troy?
Yeah, I'm gonna let my brother, I'm gonna let my brother answer that question, because he's working more closely with the contractor than me. I handle paying for it. He handles building it.
Yeah, I don't, let me, yeah, the question, I don't know the answer to that exactly, because we need to get some buildings on order. But if you are willing to, you know, call another meeting as early as next week, let Greg and I discuss it tomorrow, and then we'll come back with a plan.
What's the time, what time, Bob?
Well, there is a normal meeting on the eighth, but we could also do it on the first at six o'clock if we had to.
I'm available.
I'm available.
Yeah, let's plan for first at six o'clock.
Okay.
But we'll, I, I can send out tomorrow, once that Greg Pilcher, who's our general contractor, and I have time to speak, and see what kind of timeline that we can put together.
Okay.
I think these are taking much longer to get than they had in the past, so we don't want to miss the opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think all of us are not wanting you to just give too much landscaping to cover your building up. We want you to be seen from Highway sixty-four, but, you know, we want some landscaping. I want to get that clear, because you may go out and, you know, put, you know, where you can't see your sign or something. We want you to be visible. At least I do.
Yeah. I think we.
So I think that's, you know, among the members of the board, I think that's a conscientious thing.
Yeah, I would say, I think everything that we do that you all will be extremely proud of, that's a motto that my brother and I take from my mom. So we, I'll take all of, everything in consideration and see if we can't come back with something that meets everyone's needs and the town's needs to, to, to make it better than, it'll, it'll be better after we get done than when we started.
Well, it looks like it's definitely gonna be, so I'm excited. Hate to slow you down, but if we can do this and have a called meeting and get everything addressed, that'd be great.
If we can get it all figured out next week, we can call a meeting for the first.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, listen, thank you all, everyone, for, for your time tonight. As we do many more projects in the town, I'm sure we'll learn how all this works a lot better with each other and be a lot more organized and efficient the next time, so we don't have to have you all spend two of your nights trying to approve something for us. But we appreciate it very much.
Thank you Troy.
Well, some of this is new to us too, because our zoning ordinance is not that old. We completely adopted a new zoning ordinance in design review, and so this actually was, what, the third project to come before design review? So we're learning too. We apologize for not getting you the correct information that you needed to submit.
No problem, Mayor. We'll, we'll get good at this, and I don't think it's gonna stop our progress. Y'all can see, we've been doing lots of work there already. And we'd love to give all of y'all a tour at some point in a few months after everything's up and running, and I think y'all will be very proud of what's gonna be happening in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you Troy.
All right. Y'all have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bob, as always, thanks for putting all this together.
Yeah, man, no problem. Thank you.
All right, well, that was the only item under the agenda, but before closing that, you know, this is only our third one. And I, I feel like with the McNabb building, you know, I kept saying stuff about landscaping and, and all this stuff. And when it's all said and done, they're parking everywhere, and we just gotta get a little stronger in this one area, I think.
Well, yeah, we need, I think we need to take a look at the, the design review guidelines a little bit and, and kind of quantify some of that stuff.
Well, we need a.
A little bit better.
We need a checklist that we can hand somebody that says exactly what they need to submit, what they need to do when they walk in the door.
Yeah.
They need, they need a checklist that tells them exactly what they have to submit. Rather than us surprising them at a meeting, or them surprising us.
Yeah.
Surprises never work very well.
No.
It's gonna be a big improvement for that area, looking across.
Yeah.
This is gonna be so nice.
Yeah, and I'm glad to have them on board. And I don't want to turn them off to us, but I also think, you know, we need to do this.
It's found to look better when it starts than what that wall looks like now. I mean, it almost has to.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, well, if there's no other business for the design review, we are adjourned. And we'll open up the planning commission meeting. And take a minute to look at the minutes of the planning commission from August fourth. If nobody sees any additions or corrections, the minute stand is presented. So we're going to discuss what we want to tackle next. And Bob, you, or Bob, or Ronnie, or anyone, do they have a, does anybody have a strong feeling about what should be our next priority after the election, of course?
The.
I think we've already had an election just about, but.
The next thing we've gotta do is, we've gotta get a handle on this zoning ordinance, so that when people walk in, we can tell them what they have to do. I mean, we've got a chapter nine on landscaping, and we've got a landscaping in the design review. So does the landscaping in design review refer to the landscaping part nine?
I would've seen so.
I mean, I don't know.
It's a subset of the planning, the zoning ordinance, right?
Yep.
I think it would be nice if we had a better grasp of what it is we think would be beneficial. Not, you know, Richard was all caught up in the diameter and the species and all that kind of stuff, which is great, serves a purpose. But, but generally speaking, the landscape is, is a buffer, or it's something to improve the aesthetics. And as long as they keep the plants healthy, that address, that keeps, that's important, because I've seen that where in the past, people plant things and then they let them die, and we say we're gonna enforce them. But it's just one more bit of work we have to do. I, I think we ought to have something that says a certain width, so, because we weren't able to tell Troy what it was we were looking for, other than we wanted some kind of buffer. It'd be nice to be able to say, you know, some trees, or some shrubs, or a certain height, or a certain, the bed ought to be a certain width. I don't want to take up much of this parking lot. I don't think we need to take up much of this parking lot. But there needs to be like a.
Are we sure it's?
Yes.
Are we sure it's not already in there?
In what is required?
No, I mean, in, in the, in all the stuff that Richard and.
Well, it, it's in there, George, but it's really convoluted and very difficult for anybody probably but Richard to figure out.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's back and forth, you know, you go from one section to the other to try to verify what's in this thing. And, and it gets very, very difficult for us to, well, it's like, we're looking at it for the first time every time we look at it, which makes it difficult. That's why we redid the table of uses, so that we won't have that issue.
Right.
You know, there are other sections that have the same issues, like, like Ronnie said, landscaping is an issue.
And sign.
There's a section in the zoning ordinance that talks about fees, schedules.
We'll scroll on down to four oh four. We'll see what it looks like.
Four oh four?
Considerations. Is there anything in there that requires trees?
Well, if you go over to part nine, composition of landscape areas, a minimum of seventy acquired diameter inches of trees per acre shall be required for all landscape areas.
Part nine?
Yeah, section nine, fourteen dash nine, fourteen dash two dash nine. Part nine. I'll get down there in a second here.
Oh, nine zero zero?
No, it's section fourteen.
Here we go, landscaping. It's on the screen.
Part nine.
A minimum of seventy acquired diameter inches per acre. And I guess there's a definition there for acquired diameter inches. I don't know where that would be in the definitions, I guess.
It's italicized, yeah.
I guess we need to go back to pi r squared to get the diameter?
No.
The reverse of pi r squared, right?
The diameter is just from one side of the tree to the other.
Right, well, how do you measure that? When you don't have a line that goes between the two of them, I guess you can just guess with the ruler.
Yeah.
But if you had the circumference, you could guess the diameter.
Acquired diameter inches refers to the cumulative diameter of trees in a specified area, with all trees receiving a minimum score of eight. One twenty-four inch diameter tree and one four inch diameter tree in an area would have thirty-two acquired inches.
That doesn't seem that difficult to understand.
Well, if you're setting out these smaller trees, if you've got a bare lot and you're setting out smaller trees, I don't know how big a tree is when you get it from the nursery, but.
Not very big.
Two inches, three inches?
Yeah, two is, two is pretty common.
Yeah.
He's probably a target.
If you're brand new, you gotta set out thirty-five trees?
I, I, I agree that seventy inches per acre seems excessive, but I think the method that it's explained is perfectly clear.
Yeah, I agree.
No, you could put out, you could put out nine eight-inch, uh, uh, you, three, two-inch threes and still score nine times, uh, eight is, you know, seventy-two?
Yep.
Right, so you could do that, because the minimum score is eight.
Oh, that's true.
Well, that's funny. If you have a blank lot and you're putting in trees, that's one thing. But here, we've got a lot, that has a lot along the.
The trees are already on there.
You got trees, you got plenty of trees. They're just not, they're just not the blind.
Yeah, they're not screening marginal.
Yeah, this is, this is more in the.
I mean, look at all the trees in the back of the lot right there. Look at the size of those trees.
Except I don't think most of those trees are on that lot.
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that, Mayor, but I'm gonna look on Tennessee property viewer right now and let you know.
It still screens it.
Yeah.
It still accomplishes the screening. Yeah, it still accomplishes the screening and this is, this is the aspect of it, uh, not the landscaping, but the screening, trees as a screen. It could be a fence if they wanted a fence. It's just landscaping would be more attractive. They wanted to put in the-
And really, this is why, this is why we need a planning commission active, that's active and a design review commission that's active because in this situation, you could, you could plant 70, 70 diameters inches worth of trees and it still wouldn't accomplish the screening we intend.
No.
Or we would like to see. So, you know, I don't, I don't see a problem with, um, giving some direction like we did tonight.
Yes.
And it probably wouldn't be able to be taken care of on the first shot every time.
Yeah.
But of course, the key is people need to know that before they get the planning commission. They don't need to get surprised at the planning commission-
No, they don't.
At what they were supposed to have presented.
But if they-
On the other hand, on the other hand, they were very, uh, kind of held back some of that information. I only got this Thursday, you know, uh,
Well, but then we have to tell people that they can't.
They have to wait. Yes.
They have to figure that out. Whatever. I mean, we've got, we need to give them a checklist of what they've got to present and when I present it, then we can have the meet.
Yeah, one thing that I think would be helpful is to retool the administrative section of the zoning ordinance. You know, right now it has a breakdown of the different bodies, like what the DRC does and what the planning commission does, but it, it seems to be more appropriate maybe to get what, what the mayor is talking about, about having it by application. So if you're wanting to build a building on a lot, what are the steps to go through? Uh, what are the plans you need to do? You go to DR, the designer review first and then planning commission for the designer review, he's the exact application you have to fill out and what goes in that application. Um, so it's more of a, a clear roadmap, I think, per project type and not per board because it's, it's pretty hard. I'm, I goofed. I missed the whole site plan thing here because I think it's kind of buried in a section, uh, that was repeated somewhere else without that requirement. So that is kind of confusing. And even talking about landscaping, there's that section in 14 to 404 with, you know, a very light, uh, very light, um, list of landscaping requirements, including the 25% that was talked about, which is, I guess, in addition to what we were just reading in part nine a second ago. So I think making, making clear what applies where.
And that's, that speaks directly, Jim, to what I was talking about, about jumping around in the ordinance, looking for stuff.
Yeah.
So like if, i- i- if we were just reviewing this section and we looked at that landscaping thing, we'd have a whole different opinion than if we looked at the entire ordinance and figured it out.
Sure.
So-
Well, and 404 needs to refer to-
Absolutely.
Nine hundred, so that when you're reading that, you know, wait a minute, yeah, I got to go look at this other section or whatever.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
And you know, it's definitely, if you, uh, if you spell out the administrative section, like for example, um, one, one process would be a site plan process. And as part of that site plan process, you're required to first go to design review to look at like lighting, architecture, landscaping, and then that would flow then to the planning commission. They would look at setbacks, parking requirements, those sort of things, but it's very spelled out what board does what. Um, but it's just a site plan. You say, okay, you want to build a building, you know, build a cracker barrel. You want to go through the site plan process and here it's spelled out in section whatever of the zoning ordinance, the administrative section and give you kind of a step by step. Uh, included in that would be the, the plan requirements of, you know, what's, what, what is a site plan? What do you have to have on there? You have to have a, a, a scale, uh, you know, building dimensions and, and different things.
Can you pull that together for us, Jim?
Of course.
Uh, while I was reviewing some of that, uh, language about the BZA, uh, uh, stuff today, Jim, I was looking around at different zoning ordinances, uh, Nashville and Franklin and trying to find somebody that referred to that writ of whatever it's called, uh, crematorium. That would, uh, you know, uh, it, it, and so Franklin doesn't refer to anything. If Nashville, you have to go to court and then, uh, Knoxville, you, you, the first, uh, it goes to the, uh, board of mayor and alderman first. It's not what it's called, commissioner, their commissioners first, and then it goes to the court after that. So everybody's got a different thing, but-
Yeah.
What I noticed in there was a step by step by step approach to, uh, require, uh, for things required to go to the BZA. You have to fill out an application. You have to do this. You have to do that. And that's kind of the similar thing you're talking about with this. Uh, and I, I think it just makes it simpler on us over here too, if we had that.
Well, it's certainly a good idea to have that, but, and, and I have no problem with having it in the zoning ordinance, but it's more useful as the tool that when you come in and, and as a cheat, here's a, you know, a list of the things. Or if you're doing a subdivision, you know that you have to go through, jump through these hoops and do this. Or if you're building a, a building, it, it goes through the site plan and, and these are the steps and that we're going to need to know, uh, you know, where the utilities are and all this stuff. So we're going to have to have some kind of, something to look at other than a drawing, except for if it's a quad behind your house.
Right. So take, here, here are the rules and regulations, uh, for, uh, Franklin, uh, for their BZA procedures. And it gives you exactly what you have to do, step by step, what you're allowed to do. Of course, they have, they're quite a bit busier than us, I'm sure, but, uh, you know, it, it gives you a list of different things. This is Nashville, sorry. So, you know, uh, and it tells you the procedures and everything else. We need, we need something like that for the design review commission. You know, we need to see, we need that list of stuff that they're required to do up and, you know, in front and not have to look all over the zoning ordinance to figure, to figure it out.
Yeah.
It, it needs to be in the ordinance and then we can, when it's in the ordinance, then we can administer it because it's in the ordinance.
Uh, Bob, can I share my screen real quick?
Pardon me?
Can I share my screen real quick? Is there a way for me to do that?
Um, did you send me something?
I know, but I can. That might be better. Actually, I'll send it to you.
If you send it to me, I can, um, I'll put it up.
Share the screen. There is a way to share the screen.
Do you have a share screen on yours, Jim, at the bottom?
I do, actually.
Okay. I'll get, I'll stop sharing and then you can share.
Okay. This might be a good, um, just a, a, a single page out of a fairly long zoning code. Can, can y'all see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just like site plan reviews I talked about doing by the application, but it has the intent, like what we're trying to achieve with the site plan applicability, what, what type of projects would require a site plan, who the eligible applicant is, and then the process, you know, pre-application conference, conference, whatnot. Then the application itself, uh, it's got the form and fee. We need a digital copy, a paper copy. Um, then the plan requirements here is I think a lot of what we talked about sort of works out in a, in a checklist, you know, from the names, addresses and telephone numbers of the applicant, blah, 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 existing buildings, dimension of lot, property lines, that's sort of your checklist. And then you also have the ability to, uh, ask for additional plans that may be required on specific projects, which, you know, that list doesn't have to be separated, but I think that's what you're getting at. So, so this section right here is that checklist. And you can even take it out of the code here and put it into a separate, you know, easy, like, easy to read flyer that you can hand out to people at the counter, you know, at city hall to follow it.
But it also needs to be listed in the code, so it's in there.
Yeah. So, and this is straight out of a code right here. Um, so I think this is more of the robust and this is in, in an administrative section, like article one of the zoning code administration would outline the process and then later, you know, in a different article, you have all the, all the standards. So the landscaping plan requirements would require, you know, a certain percentage, certain type of shrubs and bushes, a certain screening, that all comes later, but this section would be solely dedicated to the process to go through.
Well, it's great. It's not copyrighted, is it?
Actually, actually I helped write this and this is for Lakeland. So that's what I was most familiar with. I could pull it quickly.
Print to, uh, print to PDF.
Do a, a search and replace on the, on the words.
You can just forward that to me. I'll take a look at that tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll snip this out.
I'd like to go to some of those, you got like 300 websites open up there too.
I like that. It's been a long day, let me tell you. And I'm seeing I can unshare my screen. I don't know how to do that.
And stop share at the top.
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing that screen anymore.
Just kind of go all the way to the top, Jim. Or, and it'll, should come down. Should say stop.
If you opt-
Should be a thing that says stop share.
I get nothing on that screen. Um, I had a thing that popped up a minute ago. Zoom is new to me. We use go-to meeting and I, I understand that one pretty well. That's not what I wanted. Well, I don't know. I'll figure it out somehow.
Exit and sign back on.
That might be the way to do it, honestly.
I think that's what you did the last time we got into this predicament.
I think it might have been. I gotta figure it out.
If you click on Zoom down there and open it, what happens?
Uh, I can, I can quit Zoom. I can start Zoom or close the window. I'm going to quit it and get out and y'all can reclaim the screen. I'll be right back.
All right.
Well, I'm still here.
You just can't quit because you're sharing, baby.
Oh, here we go. I, I, hang on.
You opt-
Hang on. I got it.
There we go. You stopped the share. Cool.
I have, okay, this is embarrassing. I'm sorry. I have three screens set up and I wasn't sharing the third one and that's where the little window popped up. So it was, it was right in front of me, but way over, way over there, third screen.
Your, your, uh, desktop reminds me of Mendy's desktop, but drives me out of my mind sometimes. You've got so much stuff open, it's hard to, hard to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so everybody sees the same problem that I see, I think, with the zoning ordinance that we have to fix some, so a bunch of different things. Uh, so administratively, maybe we can start looking at that. Uh, I'll start looking at the administration part of that and coming up with some documents that we can, uh, give people and let everybody review them and, uh, maybe we can fix that section next if we want to. That would help us here, I think.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I think, uh, you know, eventually, sorry?
That's not a huge project either. We could knock that out and get you all, the help you all need at city hall and-
And it's an ordinance though, and a public meeting and a yada, yada, yada. Yeah. But that's okay. Every time we change the zoning ordinance, it's a, it's a public meeting. So, design review guidelines probably need to be taken a look at or at least reorganized in some way so we can understand them. And, uh, the BZA guidelines need to be fixed a little bit, I think. We'll just need a little bit more stuff in there.
Even if you're just reorganizing the, the where things are in a, in the zoning ordinance, you have to have a public meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, every time you change it. It's an ordinance. It's by ordinance and it requires a public meeting to change the zoning ordinance.
Okay. So we're going to work on that. Is, uh, anybody else have something they'd like to see addressed that they have become aware of that could be tweaked, improved, changed?
Just as an aside, um, Mr. Bob, what, what was going on with the, um, the water tower?
Oh, they were cleaning the inside of it.
Ah.
So they sandblasted the inside of it and then repaint it.
I see.
They do that every so often.
That was so loud.
Yeah, well, they're, they're under contract and they do that, uh, for us when, when it's, uh, needed. I don't really know how often they do it, but it's five years or so, I think, but I'm not sure. I think they'll be walking, they'll be working at the water tank. Uh, I don't know if you noticed, George, but there's been a lot less water pressure in our neighborhood lately.
Oh, yeah.
That'll, that'll, that's already coming back, but, uh, they'll be working at the water tank down by the, uh, landfill by the, uh, Fay County, uh, dump.
So I guess I probably don't want to know the answer to this, but how do they get rid of all the, uh, the sand blasted off paint in the water?
They suck it out immediately. They don't, it's not in the water. They empty the tank and the guys are standing inside the tank, sandblasting it.
Oh, I see.
And then there's a machine that sucks it all up. I don't know how it all does it. I, you know.
Right.
But that's what it does. And then they paint it and then they refill the tank.
Interesting.
Easy peasy.
Yeah, they go in from the bottom. I know I wouldn't be doing that with a gigantic hole for two, 700 feet above the ground. I know it's not that far up, but feel like that to me if I was looking through that hole.
Hope I'm not getting any bad water over here.
Yeah.
Oil ba-, lead based paint in there from a year-
Yeah, I'm sure. Probably not.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there some way, or is there any estimation on when we can get back to in-person meetings, even if we have to do social distancing?
I don't know, Mayor. What do you think?
I miss you folks.
Me too. I hate this.
I, I don't know. I kind of oppose to it.
We legally can, we can meet, uh, in person if we want to, but we can meet at least through September at this point through Zoom. So it just depends on what people are, want to do. There are a lot of places that have never stopped meeting. I shouldn't say a lot. There are a few places where I understand they've never stopped meeting in person. So it really depends on what people are comfortable with and what you want to do. My thinking is if we can go to church, you know, and, and manage a six foot distance, we ought to be able to manage a six foot distance in the, in the big room we normally use.
Well, you can't do that. Everybody's not going to church.
Part of it depends on the level of risk that people are willing to take. You know, some, it just depends on what people want to do. Wearing masks, social distancing, it is getting better in Memphis, has been now for about two weeks. Not sure what starting schools and Labor Day is going to do to all of this. So it really just depends whether the board, I mean, you know, you can actually have at this point in time, you could have some people meeting in person, some people attending by Zoom. Uh, is, is perfectly legal too. So, I mean, if a group of people wanted to get together and maintain social distancing and wear masks, then, I mean, that could be done.
Well, I love all y'all, but I know of a whole family that COVID took out last week and I'm kind of traumatized.
Oh, goodness.
They were in Somerville, yes. Took out a classmate, then it took out her brother, then it took out the nephew. And, I mean, to know a classmate that never did anything, never smoked, and they all were educators, uh, it kind of got to me.
I bet.
It's tough.
Sorry to hear that.
The whole family. The stand back family, if you want to, you know, everybody knows, they call this the stand back family. It's pretty sad. So this is a dangerous thing.
Fine.
And, yeah, the way I understood it, you know, it came in from, from a caregiver and spread it through the family. So been kind of down about it, but, you know. It's scary.
Yes, candidly.
I know a lot of people in Somerville that are sick.
Well, we're in Fayette County. We're running about 240 to 50 active cases. Have been there for three or four weeks.
Exactly.
So-
Those are, might be just the cases that- It might be just reporting, but, you know. I might be a little emotional, but, you know, like I said, when you know somebody and you know a whole family that is taking out, it does something to you.
I'm sure of that.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
When you just, you live up, walking up healthy, you know, you just on, a few weeks ago, walking healthy. Working, you know, at the job. So. Pretty tough.
Well, I think we need to hang in there and not do it, I mean, I miss, I certainly don't like these Zoom meetings as nearly as much, I don't think there is, is effective, but I think if we can do it through September, we ought to be doing it through the end of September.
Well, that's certainly my preference.
All right.
I'm just not.
Better safe than sorry, I love you.
Just not interested in getting in a room with a bunch of people at this point in time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you feel like you've been really careful to this point and you don't want to kind of throw it all away.
Well, I mean, that's a concern that a lot of people have, they're afraid, uh, in the Memphis task force, they're concerned that there's gonna be lots more pressure to, to go back to things. And it's just now getting it under control. So, they're afraid of opening, opening back up too early, I mean, they, I see the charts twice a week where they plotted against when they shut things down, when they open back up and all that, and I mean, you can just track the graph and it shows, you know, when they open back up, three weeks later, it, it explodes.
Yeah.
And it goes right, right through the roof. So, it's coming back down now slowly, I don't know what, opening schools and I heard today on the news that University of Alabama, they have five hundred new cases since they opened last week.
Are they closing down now?
Uh, not that I heard, I don't know, you know, every school's got a different way that they're talking about handling it, uh, you know, right now, they're not gonna report individual schools in Tennessee as far as cases. They are going to report theoretically systems, so you might hear that Fayette County school system has X number of cases, but you won't know if all of those cases were at Buckley or if they were at Fayette where, or where they were uh, at this point in time, so really not gonna know if your child was in a room with somebody or not at this point. And they don't know yet, what I understand, everybody's still trying to figure out, well, if, if a teacher comes up uh, with, with the disease, is it, you know, they're talking about as much as twenty-four days for students because it's. So, anyway, the way they count it, it comes up like twenty-four days that you could be quarantined basically. So. So, if it's all right with y'all, I'll be attending through Zoom between, through, through September.
Same here, okay, well, if you're. Sorry?
A second decimal.
Okay, all right, okay, well, if we have no other business, do we have no other business, anybody?
No, I mean, I didn't really have a planning commission meeting, so I, I just thought we needed to talk about some of that other stuff. So there was really nothing on the agenda until Troy came back last week with that, uh, the design of that thing for design review, so.
Okay, so you, you'll let us know about the first and.
I'll let you know about the first, uh, probably be Friday by the time I find out, because they like to push it to the limit. But, uh, and I'll start working on the other part with Jim to see if we can get some administrative, uh, things down for maybe even, uh, the next meeting, which would be, I don't know, September. Hmm, let's see, we could, the, well, the fourth Tuesday would be the twenty-second, so. We could do the twenty-second, uh, I don't think, unless something comes up, we won't need a meeting on the eighth, I don't think.
Okay, all right.
We'll say, um, we, we approved that, uh, we approved the, uh, phase two through, uh, six for hedgerows last time and, uh, they're still working on finding someone to do that, the, the one guy who was interested decided to back away, so, but they're still working on it.
You mean, you mean he's trying to find builders?
Hersch is still working on the meadows, uh, he's, I had several phone calls about that this week, um, which resulted in interest in Nicholas Place, uh, so, um, I don't know, we'll see what, how all this goes.
Did you just say that the people that we thought were going to buy out hedgerows are not?
Yes.
The builder?
But he's still, I think he's thinking about doing it himself again. I think Tom Wilson and his partner, Mr. Burditt, who passed away, his son is interested in, uh, I think, doing it again, so. Now, we'll see how all that goes, but I sent all that information to them today, I sent them the, uh, subdivision regulations and told them where they are in the, in the, uh, process and we'll see how all that goes.
Bob, do you have in any update on the, uh, business that was moving into the north side of, uh, Ray Drugstore, I can't think of what's, the one from Georgia or something?
No, Mendy, you, Mendy, do you have anything on that? Are you still there?
Yes, I'm here, um, they actually, they ended up purchasing a home in Covington. Uh, the plan is now to have the antique store in Covington.
Are they gonna sell the building?
Well, no, they're actually interested in, uh, putting in an ice cream parlor, the last I heard.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, they're still interested, but I, they had three homes to sell in Georgia and, so, all of this was, you know, COVID and all that was going on too, and so I know that they, like I said, they purchased a building, building in Covington, they purchased a home in Covington, but they're still interested in moving forward with this business, I just don't know when that'll happen.
Okay, just curious.
Sure.
All right, well, if there is no other business, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you.